Welcome to the Board of Education. November 29th. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Wonderful. May you call the roll, please?
Wyman?
Here.
Carlin?
Here.
DeWitt?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Cars?
Here.
Colagi?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
We have a board.
Marvelous. And I would like to invite Henry and Iris Anderson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Henry and Iris, if I could have you come back up. Thank you very much. That was very nice. And they are from Shapiro STEM. And we thank them so much for being part of our board and for the meeting this week. Thank you very much. And now, we'd like to invite Lindsay Bieseck to the table to tell us a little bit about what's going on at Shapiro STEM.
Hello. Thanks for inviting me in tonight.
Of course.
So, I have some great things to share with you. I kind of categorized them into three different areas, some things that are going really well with our literacy instruction and practices, some things that were going really well with math, and then a little bit about our SEL and behavior and school-wide celebrations that we've been doing. So, I won't take up too much of your time, but I wanted to give you some highlights. So, when we look at our literacy practices right now, a lot of our professional development time and coaching focuses in kindergarten through second grade, and we're seeing really great changes at Shapiro. So, in our kindergarten classes, 83% of our students have met their goal for their November Common Formative Assessments, which is really helping us just build that strong foundation at kindergarten in literacy, so that they'll continue to grow as they go into first, second, and third grade. When we look at first grade, we have 74% of our students who met their October Common Formative Assessment. They haven't quite finished their November one yet, so I don't have their November data in there yet. But that teacher in first grade is also working with our literacy IST right now in a coaching cycle, and really focusing on using those high-leverage practices in her everyday literacy instruction, and seeing great engagement and growth with the students as well. My second-grade teachers finished a coaching cycle in October and have had great growth with their students, to the point where now 90% of our second graders are meeting expectations for their November Common Formative Assessments. When you go into those classrooms, a couple of people here have had a chance to visit, you can see kids who are excited and engaged in their reading instruction every day, and it's really brought a lot of energy to their whole day. So, those are some of the highlights that we're seeing in literacy at Shapiro. When we look at math, our focus right now is grades three to five, are really working with our math coach and math professional development, and they're doing some really great things. They're using vertical whiteboards in all of our classrooms in grades three through five, which gives students a vertical space to work on. They work in randomized groups, so they put the names into a website, throws out a group, and the three students work together at a board. They have specific directions where one student holds the marker, but all the students are required to do thinking. And if you go and join those groups, you can ask any student in there what they're working on and how they're solving the problem, and they're able to tell you. So, it's really a great opportunity for all of our students to be able to access the curriculum and use their peers as coaches through that process as well. I have a fifth-grade teacher that is working right now on offering every day. She offers mild, medium, and spicy problem choices for her students.
I love that.
So, they're all working on the same skills, but the problems have different access points to be able to differentiate for all of the needs of the students within her classroom. So, they are able to choose which problem they work on, and then if she finds that they're choosing a lot of mild problems, but they're maybe ready for a medium, there's some encouragement there for them to challenge themselves and work on to that next level. There's also an increase of use of hands-on materials and incorporating student interest areas to increase engagement in math as well. There's some fraction work going on right now, which, through the Bridges Curriculum, is typically taught with a clock model or a money model. Those are models that our students aren't necessarily as familiar with, just as living in a digital world. We don't see a lot of money or analog clocks, but what do all of our students love? Food. So, they are using a lot of food models to work on learning fractions and really using those same skills in a different way. When we look at our SEL and behavior skills, we recently celebrated all of our work on respect by having a school-family feast. So, each grade level brought in a different food item, and then we created a Shapiro snack mix. We had our whole school family together in the cafeteria at the same time. Students were able to choose wherever they wanted to sit, so we had a great mix of grade levels to build some connections, and they just sat and ate their snack. Mr. Crowe, our music teacher, played some music for us, and it was just a really beautiful way to end before our Thanksgiving break. And then, we also have just started implementing grade-level school-family jobs, so each of our classrooms has jobs for their students. But we had some school-wide areas that we needed to work on, such as picking up recess equipment, making sure that the area outside of our bathroom where we have an open sink, that paper towels are getting into the garbage can, making sure that students are having input into our Friday music or our joke of the day. So, we designed jobs for each grade level that they'll rotate through now through the rest of the year, and so they each have a way to contribute to our bigger school family as well as their classroom family. So, those are some of the great things that have been happening at Shapiro so far this year.
That's wonderful.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Great successes. Yeah, great successes, and the two words that you used were excited and engaged. And if you can make students excited and engaged in all of those different topics, you've got a winning combination.
Absolutely. That's what we're trying for.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Next, we have a very special recognition, and this is for Dr. Barb Herzog. I would like to invite Brad Schneider, the President of WMEA, and Bridget Duffy-Alrec to the front, and of course, Dr. Herzog, to present.
You can do it from the microphone. That way, it picks it up. Yeah, that way, we can pick you up.
Good evening. I'm Brad Schneider. I'm the current President of the WMEA, which stands for the Wisconsin Music Educators Association. It is our statewide professional organization that represents pre-K music teachers, elementary general music teachers, secondary general music teachers, and of course, band instructors, orchestra instructors, and choir teachers as well. So, the WMEA, we have over 1,000 members statewide. Currently, I'm President, but you need to know that Bridget, one of your own, is Regional Vice President. She's the Northeast. We divide the state into six regions, and Bridget, along with five other very capable music educators, form our board. I'm here tonight to honor one of your own with the WMEA Distinguished School Board Member Award. When reviewing Dr. Hirsig's resume and accomplishments, it seems almost more efficient to list educational boards, foundations, and leadership positions that she has not been. Indeed, from local positions of personal importance, such as Docent at the Oshkosh Public Museum, to her tenure as Vice President, President, and Immediate President of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Board of Directors, Dr. Hirsig's career has spanned the entirety of education. She has experienced education from multiple perspectives. From time as a classroom teacher and principal at both middle and high schools, to administrative leadership positions at both the school district and state level, Dr. Herzog's influence and attendant assistance to the greater education community has been nothing short of extraordinary. A current Oshkosh Administrator writes, "I wholeheartedly believe Dr. Herzog is deserving candidate for this prestigious award. Dr. Herzog has been a relentless advocate for fine arts, especially music. Dr. Herzog supports the Oshkosh Area School District, but she also supports the community and state's fine arts program. I have witnessed firsthand her unwavering dedication, commitment, and profound passion for both music and the performing arts. Her tireless efforts and support has significantly contributed to the growth of our music programs for the benefit of our Oshkosh Area School District students. I, speaking in my voice again, I find it intriguing that after many years in the schools as a teacher, administrator, professor, not to mention statewide offices on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, she has been more than willing to return to the Oshkosh Area School District as a board member. There is no doubt, with her experience, energy, and commitment to the community, the Oshkosh Area School District has an incredible asset in Dr. Barbara Herzog. It is with great pleasure that Bridget and I confer the WMEA Distinguished School Board Member Award to Dr. Barbara Herzog."
One more picture. He never officially polls. Thank you, Brad, for a wonderful presentation of recognition for Dr. Herzog. She is certainly deserving, and I think that the community is extremely appreciative for the efforts that you've put into not only this board, but all of the music learners and appreciators in the community of Oshkosh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to thank Bridget for going above and beyond in so many ways. First of all, organizing this nomination with Jackie Kiffmeyer, former principal at North, and Karen Krieger, band director at Carl Treger, Rennie Zentner, former choir director at North, and I think there was one more that I may have forgotten. This means a lot to me, not just because it's an award, but because it's given by people I have such respect and admiration for, and I know what you do each and every day to benefit kids in our community and our state. So, this is very touching, and you've all heard me say that music touches the soul. And I've been to your concerts, and my soul has been touched, and the kind words you shared tonight touched my soul again, so thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go into the land acknowledgement. It seems very anticlimactic to just carry on. Land acknowledgement.
All right, we'll keep it rolling. So, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho'ochuk Nation and a Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge that these indigenous sovereign communities, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations, and pay respect to their elders, past and present, and we welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to see any of the items changed from the agenda? Okay, we will leave the agenda as is. Board President's Report. I was lucky enough two weeks ago to be able to sit at the Leadership Oshkosh Leadership Day, Community Day, where I got to represent the Oshkosh Area School Board. It was myself, John Damel from the county, the County Executive, Matt Moogarauer, the President of the City Council Board, and Lakeisha Hazi, a member of the City Council. Did I say City Council School Board? City Council, City Council. And it was a wonderful day, teaching them, answering questions about leadership, about volunteering, about what it takes to be a volunteer in the community, and there were a lot of great questions. And all of the participants in Leadership Oshkosh were urged to continue their volunteerism after they are done with the class and be part of the community. And I think that was the message of the day, of how much impact they can have on the community and how appreciated their efforts are. Sometimes, it's not so easy, but the end result really results in a better community for all of us. That is my President's Report. Superintendent Report.
All right. So, Superintendent, good news report for tonight. We'll start at Carl Treger Elementary. Kindergartners at Carl Treger Elementary are working hard on their early literacy skills. These young readers are creating a linking chart using environmental prints with candy wrappers that they brought in from their trick-or-treating. It's a playful way with letters, has resulted in a tremendous growth in letter knowledge. We certainly love the creativity and engagement. Again, Carl Treger Elementary also had 22 girls participate in Girls on the Run this year. The team celebrated the end of the successful season with a 5K earlier this month. The program empowers girls in third through fifth grade to express their emotions, build friendships, and problem-solve while engaging in physical activity. We're grateful for so many of our elementary schools participating in the Girls on the Run program. A tradition of over 25 years was once again completed this year. Culinary students at Oshkosh North made 200 pies from scratch for Father Carr's Thanksgiving dinner. We're so grateful for their talents and time, and our students and staff to offer and give back to the community. So, congratulations, everyone involved in that. Jefferson Elementary is now the home of an exciting new Bigs with Badges program. The school has partnered with the Oshkosh Police Department and the Big Brothers, Big Sisters to pilot the new program that offers police officers with students, or that matches police officers with students. The goal is to promote growth and bridge the gap between the youth in our community and local law enforcement. Matches me twice a month to have lunch together, play some games, enjoy recess, and make some amazing memories, with more to come. Young engineers at Webster Stanley Elementary had an opportunity to test their coding skills as part of their end-of-the-unit STEM lesson on life cycles. It was great to see students across the district engage in STEM learning. Not only were they able to explain life cycles, but they were able to explain how and why the coding the cycles the way that they did. So, great job for everyone involved in that. Oshkosh West one-act play called Orphan Trains took center stage at their state performance and made history, winning the first Critics' Choice Award in 23 years. In fact, West swept the awards, winning Critics' Choice, Outstanding Ensemble, Outstanding Technical Theater, Outstanding Director, and not one, but two outstanding acting awards. So, way to go Wildcats, and congratulations on a job well done. Lakeside Elementary School Counselor Jennifer Lubinski was recently awarded the Equity in Action Award by the Wisconsin School Counselors Association. The award recognizes a Wisconsin school counselor who demonstrates leadership, advocacy, and collaboration within their school community, and has made significant contributions to the advancement of equity in education for students. Jennifer works hard every day to be an advocate for all students and to ensure that everyone feels safe, supported, and empowered at school. Proud to recognize the important work of such a dedicated employee. So, congratulations to Jennifer, and she'll also be featured on our upcoming podcast series, Mission Keepers. So, more on that later. That's a dramatic promo for my new podcast. Recently, a few of our students participated in the Wisconsin School Association Middle Level State Honors Orchestra Performance in Verona. The students auditioned for the honors orchestra independently and were selected out of hundreds of applicants to be part of this prestigious concert. They performed with some of the best middle school orchestra students in the state and had the opportunity to rehearse and perform with nationally-known conductors. So, congratulations to these fantastic musicians. Great work. And then, finally, just some work that I've been able to do over the last couple of weeks. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to be part of, not only within our district, but beyond the boundaries of our district, to continue to advocate for our students and families. And that concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Verbal report from Mrs. Conrad Peters from the Listening Session on November 8.
Hi, good evening. This is a reminder to our community that we do have a Listening Session at 5:00 PM at the first board meeting of the month. In this past Listening Session, we had a very robust and in-depth conversation, because a Listening Session is a time for our community members to have dialogue with our board and with our OASD leadership. Four community members participated in the Listening Session. One community member shared a conversation they had with a teacher about results that they are seeing in student reading data after using new strategies. The community member also emphasized that sharing information and transparency in the community around literacy is key to strengthening relationships and building trust. The other participating community members asked the following questions. There were a lot of questions that were asked and a lot of dialogue. When can we expect to see a change in the data? If you look back to conversations five years ago, and results have not changed. Dr. Coleman acknowledged some of the things that were going to be discussed that evening, and he had stated that there will be truth-telling and acknowledging we need to take radically different actions. We had a conversation on accountability and the time and place to celebrate improvements. The question was asked, what five specific things are going to change? We discussed what would be presented in the workshop around that, including rigor, high expectations, grade-level expectations, engagement, accountability, high levels of support, and identifying a universal literacy curriculum. It was also asked, what is the radius of the community, and how do we get community involved? We discussed a community lift, being intentional about partnerships, communications, and family engagement, inviting involvement. It was also asked, why is there a practice of looking outside the community to find answers? Discussion about grant work and who is engaged in the grant work, and an ask for transparency behind the scenes in laying out steps and addressing the system. There was also the question of what is the timeline for improvements? Two, three, five years? And we talked about structural changes first and results following. And how do we get parents into the schools? How do we get that started? And what does engagement look like for them? And was a discussion around a need for a dedicated strategy. So, as you can see, we had a very robust back and forth.
Yes, we did. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Camerer, Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Screener Sabers, the Fall Report.
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, Sabers is our social and emotional learning risk screener, and it accounts for 25% of our Safe and Healthy Schools core area within our strategic plan. So, if you'll recall, Sabers is made up of two different batteries. There's the Sabers battery, which is a survey that's filled out by our teachers in grades K through five, and that's done three times per year, fall, winter, and spring. And then, there's the My Sabers component, which is done by students. That's also done three times per year, and that's done in grades two through 12. So, when we think about the KPI, really, the My Sabers component is more representative of our entire district. This is the first year that's been used in grades nine through 12. So, between the two, those are the scores that I tend to focus on a little bit more when looking at the KPI metrics. If you look back at the end of last school year in the spring benchmark, we were at a three-star rating, and it didn't matter at that time if you looked at Sabers or My Sabers. They both fell within the three-star area. For Sabers, we had 77% of our students in the low-risk range, and 5% of our students in the high-risk range. For My Sabers, it was 76% and 4% respectively. When you look at the Fall Benchmark for this year, for My Sabers, again, this is the student rating, we were at 78% of our students in the low-risk category and only 3% in the high-risk category. So, that still kept us in the three-star range, but typically, the Fall Benchmark tends to be a bit lower in terms of the number of students that we have in the low-risk category. So, I think this was a good sign to be at 78% to start the year. Sabers was a little bit lower in terms of our scores for students who are in the low-risk category. We're at 76%, and for high-risk, we're at 6%. So, the teacher ratings from what they were observing were a little bit different, which isn't too surprising, like I said, given where we were in the school year. Some of the other trends that you can pick out, when you look at My Sabers in grades K1 and 2, students tended to score a bit lower at those grade levels. And again, those students have the least amount of SEL development when you look across our system, so it's not too surprising that they would score a little bit lower. And then, when you look at other subgroups, for instance, our Black or students who are two or more races scored a bit lower than our white students in both the Sabers. It wasn't as pronounced on My Sabers in those areas. So, in terms of areas of focus for us going forward, we're going to continue to implement conscious discipline across our system at the elementary level and restorative practices at the secondary level. We also have our Harmony SEL curriculum in place at the elementary level to support our conscious discipline work. And then, of course, this will be tied into, continue to be tied into our equity work as well.
Questions? Yes.
I had a question. I'm always the first one that says, I don't want to compare our district to other districts because it's not apples to apples. But when I was looking at this data, I was wondering how we compare to other districts and if they're collecting this data as well.
Yeah, it's hard to say, because Sabers is something that's not done by every district. Every district kind of does their own type of screener. Some districts don't have any screeners for SEL, so I can't really say for sure how we stack up based on this data.
Got it. Okay. Anyone else? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. Is conscious discipline, let me rephrase that. Do all of our elementary buildings have people who are trained in conscious discipline?
Yes.
Okay. And is the same true, then, of the restorative practices at middle and high schools levels?
Yeah, there's individuals trained in each school. We're working on training more individuals with restorative practices. At the secondary level, we're a little bit behind the elementary. Really, we started with focusing on the elementary level and pushing out conscious discipline. So, at this point, it's not that we're shifting our focus away from elementary, we're just really working on building the capacity of the staff at our secondary level at this point.
And then, on L, under major points, you noted that some of the opportunities for improvement would be to reduce the racial and gender discrepancies. Is that something that might be addressed? I'm just curious. Through the counseling program or some other? I'm just curious, through the counseling program or some other methods?
Potentially, potentially. So our school counselors take on a variety of roles, but some of the things they do is run small groups for students. And those could be targeting a number of different things related to social, emotional, and skill development. So that could certainly be something that we do more of to target certain subgroups that may be a little bit lower.
And my final question, and this will be the last one. There was a statement in here about, I think it was streamlining, streamlining the care team process. It's in M, in incorporating more accountability. Could you speak to that at all? What do you mean by streamlining the care team process?
Yeah, so our care team process is a very specific problem-solving process that we've implemented over the course of a number of years. When you're trying to calibrate that process within 20 different schools, every school has their own unique flavor to what care team looks like. And some of our schools over time had kind of veered off from what that process was intended to be. So really what we did is we kind of went back to the drawing board and made sure that the pieces of that process that we think are essential for every school to have in place, we want to make sure those are in place. So we came up with some forms and some processes that we're going to use as a district, just to check in from time to time and make sure we're adequately supporting our schools, to really make sure those teams are working as they should.
So it sounds like to me you're looking for greater equity and greater efficiencies as those teams work together.
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for answering all those questions.
Of course.
I forgot one question.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I'm so sorry. I had a, I forgot that I had also a question of, is our goal to get that low-risk category to 0%, which is probably not possible? So our goal is obviously to address.
Yeah, so we want a higher percentage at low risk. We want a lower percentage at high risk. Ideally, we'd want somewhere around 80% to 85% of our students at that low-risk category. Well, I should say ideally, we'd want 100% of our students at low risk.
Right.
But in terms of our targets, we're looking at getting that number to 80% to 85%. And we're looking to get our high-risk numbers down to 3% or less.
Okay, thank you.
Good goals.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Next, we have Ms. Kiffmeyer, and this is Student Involvement in Activities, Fall Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello? So I'm going to address where our high schools fell within fall participation, which falls under our KPI Core Area 4, Engagement and Communication. We really know that when students have a sense of belonging and feel connected, they are able to succeed and excel within schools. So our goal is to move our KPI from the current two stars, which is around 47%, was the marker that we had at the spring marker, to at least three stars at 50% by the end of all of our sports and seasons within this year. So currently, we still sit at two stars. Fall participation usually is a little bit lower. Overall, we're at 36% because the offering at fall is a little bit less than at winter. And then obviously, you build participation based on areas of interest. But some key points were, we were around 36% of all high school students were involved in at least one or more activities for the fall. We do have disproportionality between our subgroups, which is also an area of focus for our athletic directors, our clubs, and our advisors to be really focusing and pushing and looking at interest for the students. Something that I want to make sure that everybody does know is that, you know, our sports are really kind of devised by WIAA and what's out there to be for them to participate. But any club that a student has an interest in, and there isn't one currently at our high schools, there's a super easy process for them to start that club. All they basically have to do is find an adult who's willing to be their advisor, submit a form, and then they can start the club that is of interest of them. And so I think that's really interesting because as our student population evolves and our interests evolve, so should our clubs and organizations. So students definitely have the ability to do that. One of the key components that we're working with our athletic directors are, is to make sure that students know that process and are able to make sure that they know how to do that so that they feel they can, they can get that out there. Fall participation, like I said, was around 36%. Our White students participated at a higher rate than our non-White students. Our White students participated at 40.12% as comparison to our non-White students at 27.26%. Our non-social economically disadvantaged students participated at a higher rate than our socially economic disadvantaged students, from 44.2% compared to 23.6% for socially economically disadvantaged. And our largest gap in participation is between our non-English speakers and our, our non-English, sorry, our largest gap in participation is between our non-English speakers of other languages and our Ecel students. And the gap was about 24%. So that's also an area of focus for us to make sure that we engage those students as well. And like I said, our goal is to move from the two-star category to the three-star by the end of the school year. Any questions?
Go ahead. I don't want to go first again.
I'll go.
Okay, Mr. Currents?
I appreciate you saying at the start is that the importance of kids being involved and the likelihood of success. And I've talked about that, and we've talked about that on our board for years. Appreciate the focus on it. And I know everybody here understands it, but just to say it, like, it's not good enough. Like 36% is not good enough. And so we have to find ways to get, to get kids involved, to go to them in whatever, whatever that is. I've seen a lot of different activities added, I mean, since I've been at West and a lot of, a lot of things. So I just think there's a lot of room for growth and I'm proud of what we've done, but I know we can do better.
Absolutely.
Well, can I go?
Oh, yeah, go.
Well, a good story to share, I guess, on this front is, my daughter plays freshman volleyball and they had 40-some kids go out at West. In the past, they would have cut, you know, probably 30 kids. But the district supported an extra team to allow more kids to participate. And I know that a lot of parents and families and kids were really thankful for that. So that was progress in eyes. And I know that same thing is happening in a number of different sport areas, sports areas. So there's more work to do, but I wanted to highlight that story as an example of some of the work that is being done. Because I know all kinds of people in the community reached out about how they were appreciative that the district was able to fund an extra team, you know, and is funding extra teams so that kids can have that positive experience, so.
Thank you for sharing that. And that's one of the things that we're working on, is making sure we reduce barriers so that if there are increased participation, that we don't say it's because we don't have enough coaches or we don't have the ability to fund that. Because we do believe that connectedness is the key for students to succeed and thrive at high school level.
I'm glad you brought that up because I, soccer did it, basketball. I think I've seen, heard a lot of positive developments on that front and I, you know, that's important to share. So thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I'm ready. Okay, so I have two questions. The first question, I think I already know the answer to, but I thought it was important to ask for the greater good of people that might be watching the meeting. And that question is, why do we want students to be involved in extracurriculars? Are they happy? Do they get better grades? Are they less truancy? All of the above, et cetera?
All of the above, absolutely. And again, when they're connected, they thrive and they have go-to adults, more go-to adults, more friendships are built. They feel like they're a part of a community. And when you're a part of a community, your attendance is better. All of those things go up.
Less likely to do drugs and alcohol.
Absolutely.
All that, yeah. So it's a very good thing. So I, my second question was, what are we doing to kind of close the gap between the economically disadvantaged and the disadvantaged group? Because we want everybody to be able to participate. We don't want money to be a barrier. Are we doing anything in this area?
Well, one thing that we make sure that we're publicizing or continue to publicize is that if students and families qualify for free and reduced, that that fee is waived for athletics or extracurricular activities. I know sometimes that families don't want to come forward with that necessarily, so we are trying to increase our communication to fill that form out in the front end. Everybody gets that mailer in the beginning of school anyways, to fill that out. And if you qualify, then it's there and then it's automatically put in. The other thing is, we're switching from fees going into IC to the school store, which if you do qualify for free and reduced, that automatically does not show any fee. It comes up as a zero balance. So when they check the forms and participation signatures, that they don't have to worry about that piece, so that's eliminated for them as well. So it's just increasing the communication so people know that that's an option. And there's a great thing about our food program, that we do have free lunch and breakfast at most of our schools. But that also is a deterrent sometimes for people to fill out the forms as well. So just making sure that people know the advantages of filling that out, because it includes not only, you know, athletic fees, but it reduces your CAP courses or your AP courses and things like that as well.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
I'll call on myself. I have one more positive to share, and that was the Vell Phillips Middle School Band Concert. To see a jazz band with that many kids in it and as many participants as there were, and the enthusiastic conductor, Ann Gloria Dorshner Mackey, there recruiting the kids to say, "Come on, high school's next. Stay in, stay in," was huge. And that was really, it was really nice to see how a combination of two schools can make the band larger, the jazz band larger, and the enthusiasm was just contagious.
And that's, that's super exciting for the high school levels too, because they know if we can get them involved earlier, that they're more likely to continue and then also expand and grow our programs.
Right.
Can I ask another question? Oh, sorry. We don't count regular band students who take it for class, correct?
Correct.
I feel like, I don't know how to do that, but a lot of their performances are outside of class time. So that's always a partially extracurricular, partially regular class. Like I think that probably would encompass a lot more kids that are doing concerts, pep band, football games, basketball games, and those kind of activities. Because that always feels like it's somewhat extracurricular, you know, in nature. So I wonder if there's a way to capture that, to see if there's any value in that. Because I, sometimes I just want to see if the numbers are actually.
Yeah, and we can definitely look at that when we reanalyze our KPIs in the spring.
Yeah.
And I think there's also components of that, like jazz band is separate necessarily, and so that's the outside concert sometimes that you see at, you know, the basketball games or football games, things like that.
Because you look at, I mean, they're doing multiple parades, they're doing multiple, I mean, a handful of jazz, sorry, pep band, you know, like there's, there's a lot that goes into that outside of the classroom, so.
We've also, that made me think about when I was doing the report and looking at the data, is we've changed madrigals as well. It used to be completely outside and now it's part of zero hour or two. So that was another thing that I thought about in terms of true participation.
Yeah.
Madrigals should absolutely be part. They do so much outside of the regular hours.
Absolutely.
Dr. Herzak? I'm sorry.
Just two quick points here. Under G, under major points, speaking about students with disability, I think it's been wonderful, the way that the district has provided some opportunities over the last couple of years with the brewing futures. I'm not sure if that's considered extracurricular or curricular, but they're outside of the school day oftentimes, serving people in the community. And then the advent of the Adapted Physical Education League, I think is just wonderful. I also want to compliment you on the presentation of your data. I am a strong advocate for bar graphs. I find them easier to read. And you made them very easy for me to read by actually putting the numbers into each, into each bar. So I thank you for that. And I think it's, it speaks well of the district and Dr. Davis's leadership of the district having the courage to break down these data, to segregate these data and share these with the, with the public and the community. Because we're here to educate all the students and we, we don't know for doing that if we just present the raw data and have all the kids in one large group. So thank you for the presentation of the data.
And you actually stole a little bit of my celebration that I was going to make at the end, but that's okay. One of the areas that we've closed the largest gap is with students with disabilities and without disabilities. So the data that we pulled four years ago showed a 29% gap. And currently, this year, we're only at 18% of a gap. So definitely the addition of, you know, opportunities for students as well as the adapted sport league has made a huge difference.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
It's just so, you know, I'm just so thankful that we're putting a focus on this stuff because it's so important. You know, it's such a big piece to the culture that we build. Kids want to be on these teams. They want to get the grades that they need to have to be on these teams. No matter what my daughter's doing in high school, I can say, you know, you need good grades for volleyball. You know, you need good grades to play in sports. It's just such, you know, it's why it's been emphasized that we need to be good at all these things, academics, extracurriculars. So I really appreciate this report and I really appreciate the work we're doing to do that. So thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff engagement. Mrs. Johnson? Good evening.
As a district, we know that the engagement of employees has a direct and positive impact on our students. In our strategic plan, employee engagement represents, is one of our key performance indicators within our Engagement and Communication Core Area, representing 25% of this core area. Since January of 2021, our district uses the Gallup Q12 Employee Engagement Survey to measure staff engagement. And the survey is distributed twice per year, once in the fall to give us a baseline and the second in the spring to see if the actions and plans that we put into place has been helping us to move the needle. The survey results are then shared with our employees from their supervisors or their principals within their buildings and district, or buildings or departments, to develop action plans that support their own engagement. All of our administrators will be meeting with Ted Nitsky on December 12. At that time, we're going to receive guidance on tools and ways that we can implement action plans within our buildings or departments to help guide our improvement efforts as we strive to be the best place to work. So Gallup defines engaged employees as individuals who work with passion and feel a profound connection with their place of employment. In our district, we're striving to have our employees, teams, and schools own their own engagement. This means giving them the tools to inspire change that directly impacts their work and their ability to be and do their best work. So this fall, we had 989 employees participate in the Gallup survey. With approximately 1,500 employees, that's roughly about a 65% participation. Our results from this survey show continued improvement, specifically, 47% of our employees who responded to the survey indicated they are engaged at work compared to a national average of 32% workplace engagement. In our most recent meeting with Ted Nitsky, he shared with us that our 47% achievement places our district in the top 5% within the education sectors who participate in Gallup. Additionally, we've reduced our actively disengaged employees by more than half since 2021, going from 19% to 8% as of the fall of 2023. So an HR next step is that we will be implementing stay surveys within the district as a proactive and valuable approach to improve employee engagement, retention, and overall workplace satisfaction. Our goal is to collect and analyze this data so that we, these interviews, the data from these interviews in order to enhance engagement and retention. We plan to identify actions that can improve the employee experience, help eliminate possible sources of frustrations or concerns, and focus on the positive by helping to understand why employees stay with our district and develop strategies to reinforce those factors. And finally, our district goals. As a district, we're striving to engage levels of 50% or higher while ensuring that disengaged staff remains at or below 6%. We'll continue to collaborate with Ted Nitsky to assist in delving deeper into our outcomes and formulating action plans that drive our progress and move our numbers forward. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Currents?
Yeah, I love looking at the survey results because it really is a snapshot of when Chris, Beth, and I, about the time we came onto the school board, right? And so there's been a lot of change and a lot of movement since then and a lot of investment. I think all of us, I would say here, care deeply about our staff. And the decisions that we make in this room affect them. And seeing the improvement and seeing that we're not satisfied with those numbers, even though- though it's in the top 5%, still not good enough. Like, I, I appreciate that. And it takes me back to last meeting where we're talking about literacy scores, that we can figure out this, we can figure out that. And I believe that we have the right people and, and stuff to work on that. But this is, you know, very exciting to see that. And I think, you know, I mean, I interact with a number of, of teachers and staff members, and I think it resembles exactly what I hear and feel when you, when you talk to people. So I think, you know, it's really exciting, so keep up the good work.
Mrs. Carolyn?
There was one metric that Ted was tracking. I forget what it was called, but it was, would you recommend working here to someone or something? Do you know what I'm talking about?
So that's our net promoter score?
Net promoter, that's it.
Yeah, so that would be a different, that would be, that's very, that's separate from, from what this is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So this would measure, so that, that measured just a person's ability, or person's interest in promoting the district.
Okay.
So this is specific to internally to our employees.
On how they're working with each other.
And whether or not they feel like they're engaged in their workplace.
Got it, okay.
Right? So, so two different.
Two different surveys. Okay, thank you.
And we have to give credit to the Superintendent Davis as well. I mean, the numbers in fall of 2021, we had 28% of employees engaged. Fall of 20, that's roughly when you started or in that area. Fall of 2023 now, 47% of employees are engaged. In addition to that, in 2021, 19% of employees were disengaged. Now only 8%. I mean, that's tremendous movement in the right direction that shows that our workforce is, you know, happier in their job and more engaged with their job. And, I mean, a whole lot of people deserve credit for that, obviously, but that's about the time that you came and, you know, we've seen significant improvement there. So, thank you to everyone that's helped, but I just wanted to give him some credit as well.
Thank you.
And I just want to finish off this segment by saying, Mrs. Bieseck talked about students that were excited and engaged and how it has helped their literacy scores. And if we can continue on this track where we can have staff that is excited and engaged, it's going to help our literacy scores as a district. So, that's my final. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great report. Student attendance quarterly written report. Mr. Kemmer.
All right, it's me again.
Never get tired of you.
Thank you. So I'm also reporting out on school attendance, which counts for 20% of our engagement and communication KPI within our strategic plan. So, at this point, our student attendance rate is 94.5%. So student attendance rate is only one of the ways that we measure attendance within a district. It's probably the most common way that school districts measure their attendance. So it's easier for us to make comparisons across districts and compare to like state averages using attendance rate. But even within attendance rate, there are multiple ways to calculate an attendance rate. So when we created this KPI, the, the way that we calculated the attendance rate was what's called a full day attendance rate. So that looks at the percentage of students that are actually attending school for the full day. So if a student is tardy for class or comes late to school, even if it's by a few minutes, they would count it as a zero for that day. So it has a, a place if you're trying to track, you know, full day attendance or the students who come consistently each and every day. But the other way to calculate the attendance rate is just through our student information system where you're looking at just the amount of time students are attended, in attendance throughout the course of a day. So that seems like a more consistent and a, a better way to look at attendance rate. So we shifted gears a little bit this year, and that's how we're looking at attendance rate at this point. So we're above the state average, which is 94.3. But when you look at that on the, the metrics that we've developed for our KPI, it's a little bit misleading. We're at a five-star rating right now, so we might have to adjust that a little bit. It's not to say that our attendance is, is poor, but I think based on what we intended that, that rating system to be, like I said, if we looked at the, the full day attendance rate, we'd probably still be in like the four-star category where we were at the end of last year. So just something to note going forward. When you look at different subgroups, we were above the state average in, in almost every subgroup, which is good news, but we're not satisfied with that. We know how important school attendance is. We know that it all starts with attendance. If schools, if students aren't coming to school, they can't learn literacy, they can't learn math, they can't develop their SCL skills. So this is something that we're continuing to tackle with our Attendance Matters Campaign. We started that last year. This year, we're really beefing that up more. So we had a committee meeting earlier this year where we've developed subcommittees, and we're really looking at how we can help all, all stakeholders understand the importance of school attendance and the importance that, that has for all of us within our community, and then help them understand how they can impact school attendance. So there are a lot of things that our subcommittees are working on, both in the district and outside of the district.
That's great. Questions? Dr. Herzak?
Thank you. I just have two clarification questions. Under G.
Oops, I just lost, just lost it.
Is that third category, the one on the right, is that the year-to-date for 2324?
Yes.
Okay, and then, under H, what year is that?
Where are you?
H. Yeah, the graph is disaggregated.
So that, that is the current school year.
The disaggregated one. What, what, I was wondering what year that was.
Yeah, that is this current school year.
That's 2324?
2324.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I'm sorry, I'm so full of questions tonight. What, the Attendance Matters Campaign, that was very successful. What were some of the incentives that were offered to students for coming to school on time throughout the year?
So that, some of that varied by school.
Okay.
We partnered with a local business in town at our high school level to do some attendance promotion last year. And that was something where students could win gift cards by putting their name in if they had a certain attendance level or attendance rate over the course of the previous month. So other things that we did last year, early in the year, we sent out magnets with start times on to every, every parent within the district. We also sent out RAC cards that just explained a little bit more about the importance of attendance and even what missing a day or two a month can do to a student in terms of their academic skills. And then we also had brochures that our social workers have been using, again, to reinforce that, that importance.
Awesome, thank you.
These data are really impressive.
Absolutely.
Kudos to everyone who's contributed to these.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Committee reports. Facilities and Finance. Dr. Herzak.
Facilities and Finance met on Thursday, November 9th. We talked about Fund 46. This is the fund into which monies go to help with future construction. So we looked at the balance sheet and the revenue and expenditures within that, that fund. There was also discussion about naming the Little Theater at Oshkosh West High School, which is Room C29, for a former director of drama at Oshkosh West High School. That will be coming to the board, I believe, at the December meeting for approval. We also discussed buses' arrival at school sites. We noted that discussions are underway between the district and Covison to adjust pickup times while taking winter conditions into consideration. And finally, we talked about the banking request for proposal, which will include the requirement of the financial institutions chosen having the same core values as the school district. We will meet again on December 14th at 7:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Legislative Committee.
Legislative Committee met yesterday, Tuesday, November 28th. There was a recap of meetings with the legislators, namely Representative Palmieri and Senator Representative Shaw declined the meeting invitation, but will be willing to meet with us in the future. There, there was discussion about the recently created Talking Points document, which the committee had input into and which Dr. Davis did a great job of synthesizing, using that as a tool and guiding our discussions. Senator Fine made two critical points. One was he's optimistic about the future progress of special education funding as he has seen some support. That notion is to increase the public school reimbursement above the current level of 33%. He's going to keep that on his radar as we are currently locked into a two-year cycle with the current budget, but in the next millennium, this could be a topic of conversation. On another note, he did not feel that the Foundations of Reading Test, also known as the FORT, is likely to have any exceptions made beyond the current special education teachers. There has been discussion through the WASB and other groups to allow teachers of, students of other languages to be exempt from the FORT, but that has not received much traction. Both Mrs. Palmieri and Mr. Fine were receptive to the discussions and thankful to have the Oshkosh information in the form of Talking Points for future reference in terms of how legislation affects our district. And the district will continue to update the Talking Points in order to continue our advocacy. Starting in January, CISA 6 will be starting its legislative breakfast, and in the spring, we will be scheduling meetings again with our legislators. Dr. Davis noted that the past legislative session has been an active one, as described by local superintendents. A lot of the legislation brought forward has not received much support. However, moving forward, because of our relationship building with our own lawmakers, when it comes to education issues, we believe that the legislators, legislators will reach out to us for feedback. And then I provided an update on the Wisconsin Association of School Board's legislative updates, including one which would provide for equal payments to school districts from the state. Currently, they make more than one payment, but they're not equal. So the district then typically, not only us, but other districts have to engage in short-term borrowing in the month of December to make payroll and to, to pay other bills. We canceled our December 26th meeting and will meet on Tuesday, January 23rd at 8:30 AM in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Carolyn, Policy and Governance.
Thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met yesterday, and I apologize to my fellow committee members for not being at that meeting. It's good for me to do the minutes and review everything that you guys did yesterday. So from the looks of it, there were three policies that, that were reviewed, and two of the three had technical updates. The first one was 5500 student, or Student Code of Classroom Conduct. The committee had discussed this policy in October, and we discussed the process for the code of conduct review and wanted administration to return to our November meeting with the proposal on how to, the review will take place. Oh my gosh, something is, I cannot talk tonight. Dr. Coleman say that the district will reach out to groups listed in policy to organize the committee to meet and review, update the student classroom code of conduct. The other changes were very small. We, it looks like we changed board to superintendent, so it reads differently. And we also, instead of saying every four years, put, or added every four years instead of periodically. And these three policies will be coming to the full board for approval on our December 13th meeting. The other last one was related to the conflict of interest. Language was added to this policy clarifying that board members may not be paid, be a paid employee of the district. Also, we added statutory language that provides an opportunity for board members to serve as unpaid volunteers. This is another policy that will be coming for, to the board for approval on the 13th. It looks like it was a short meeting, and the decision was made not to meet on December 26th, which I think is a great idea. So our next meeting will be January 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Davis is going to see if we have any speakers tonight for our public forum.
We do not.
We do not have any, so we will dispense with the public forum, both a non-agenda and agenda-related, and move on to consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material, and each M is discussed in previous meetings. It will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Looking for a motion. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Salaaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Lyman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have an individually considered resolution this evening. This is English for speakers of other languages, the ESOL Program Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Discussion, discussion.
Yeah, discussion. Discussion slash presentation.
Discussion slash presentation.
Dr. Cobble will get us kicked off and.
Marvelous.
All right. Good evening to the board, to our community members listening. I am honored to join Don Shamira and Laura Zong as they provide an overview of our district's ESOL program and the impacts that our ESOL programming is having on the lives of our students and families. Don, Laura, and the entire ESOL team work incredibly hard, going above and beyond, seven days a week to meet the unique language, academic, and social, emotional needs of students who receive language services and including students with refugee backgrounds. As a school district, we believe that students who receive ESOL services bring a unique and valuable experience to our entire school and community. And so in addition to providing direct support and services to our students, we're committed to making sure that all of our learning spaces in our district are spaces where ESOL students can feel a sense of belonging, can learn and contribute to the learning experiences that all students enjoy. This commitment is one that can't solely be owned by our ESOL team, but must be shared by all of us. And I'm excited that the team shares their expertise, shares their priorities, and collaborates so that as a district and learning team, we can, can join in on the commitment to make sure that our ESOL students and families are supported. So with that, I will turn it over to Don and Laura.
Okay, there are minor revisions and updates to the ESOL Program Plan. The EL data and ESOL staffing was updated on pages one and four through nine. There was an English Language Development Standards addition to page 61, and the Students with Refugee Background, SRB, is what you'll see it referred to throughout our presentation, Students with Refugee Background. Students are first, focus on the student, not the background, updated on page 82. I will begin with the first three topics, and Laura will finish out with the SRB updates. In OASD, while we do provide explicit language instruction in one-to-one and group-type settings, it is a co-planning, co-serving type of model that the, that OASD integrates English learning into content, into content-driven courses, into content-driven courses. English learners receive linguistic, social, emotional, academic, and cultural support in inclusive environments district-wide. Over the past 10 years, OASD has seen a 200-plus increase in the number of ELs. This growth is most noticeable in our high schools, resulting primarily from new students arriving through refugee resettlement. This data here is from November 15th and does not include the new arrivals that had not yet been screened for EL services. Here they are listed as PELs at the bottom, potential English learners. So the numbers are actually higher than depicted in this graph. The EL population at a glance by English proficiency level depicts the highest numbers of ELs at Level 1 and at Level 3 on a scale of 1 through 6, by being proficient. Of the 8,600 or so students enrolled in OASD at the time that this data was taken, 661 are ELs, approximately 7.7% of the students in OASD. The EL population at a glance by English proficiency level depicts the highest numbers of ELs at Level 1 and at Level 3 on a scale of 1 through 6, by being proficient. Of the 8,600 or so students enrolled in OASD at the time that this data was taken, 661 are ELs, approximately 7.7% of the students in OASD. This is an increase from 7% when I presented last spring. 60-plus languages are spoken throughout our OASD homes. 246 of our 661 ELs have refugee background, or 37%. In addition to the multicultural outreach services that Laura will talk about later, OASD offers ATLAS courses, and it's an acronym. It's acquired through language and in supports. It's meant for students with, that's life there. It's meant for students with limited or interrupted formal education, which is an artifact of having come from war-torn countries and escaping, you know, the situations that they're in and the reasons why they're coming over as refugees. So, okay, so in addition, we offer ATLAS courses for this life, and these courses aim to quickly fill in education gaps, increasing later success in mainstream content area courses for all students. So the idea is to get them into the regular courses very quickly, but we need to fill in those gaps first. One example of ATLAS course effectiveness can be seen in this spring 2023 iReady data. These 12 students from Emma Iden's newcomer literacy class at Merrill Middle School averaged 212% annual growth. The top three students show growth at rates that ranged from 356 to 661%. The bottom three students in this class still demonstrated 132 to 189% growth. Effectively filling in education gaps quickly to transition then into the mainstream courses, the ELA, the regular mainstream ELA courses, with support of course still, but they were ready and to be successful there. That's the point of these classes. They're not meant to be in there long-term. It's quickly fill in those education gaps and get them into the regular courses. That class had 12 students. As our number of SRBs rise, so do our class sizes. We are now running into issues at North High School where we don't have enough seats in our classrooms, and going beyond 30 in some of those classes. Administration and staff are working through creative solutions to provide quality education in all of our ATLAS courses despite these student, high student-to-teacher ratios and gradually increase, as we gradually increase our EL enrollment. We currently employ five types of positions within our ESOL department: teacher, TA or paraprofessional, interpreter, our MCO team, multicultural outreach team, and refugee youth mentors. We have 24 ESOL teachers, with four of them also serving in interpreter or mentor roles. We have nine TAs, with six of them serving also as interpreters and/or mentors during non-contracted hours. We have three part-time interpreters that are also, are on call as needed. Laura Zhang is our multicultural outreach coordinator. Ayak Deng is our multicultural outreach navigator. She couldn't be here today, she would have let two, but she was unable to. Holden Krieger is our multicultural outreach navigation assistant and also a refugee youth mentor. In addition, we have seven grant-funded refugee youth mentors in our program. We have an incredibly dedicated, passionate, and professional ESOL team that OASD can be very proud of. Access for EL standardized state testing is on the horizon. Eight retired teachers are trained and ready to proctor the district-wide test beginning December 4. The results provide us with English language proficiency level data. Levels range from 1 to 6. Once a student reaches Level 5, they are reclassified as English language proficient, and ESOL teachers monitor them for two years following that reclassification. This is data from last year that shows the overall English language development growth levels. See that 67.3% are at or above expected language growth, and that SGP is a reliable indicator of how a district, how we are doing in supporting our ELs. Thank you for adopting the English Language Development Standards this past June. As a refresher, the ELD standards are available for social and instructional purposes across all content areas, that you see in blue there. There are content-specific ELD standards for language arts, math, science, and social Also remember that from the presentation last spring, that ELD standards make language expectations visible within the disciplinary practices. They are the two sides of the same coin. Using the ELD standards as a guide will eventually, with the support of ESOL teachers, integrate explicit teaching of how language works into their daily lessons. Finally, this is the roadmap to ELD standards integration. In the lower bottom, June 2023, you see that you all adopted the standards. The next point up in number five there, the final of the three ELD workshops with coaches and curriculum coordinators will be on January 25. Then in point six there, at the bottom, lower right, building awareness throughout the district has begun in K5 ELA and K12 math. Work with the ELD standards integrations in secondary social studies and also for our ATLAS courses will begin on December 8. This work will continue collaboratively in the upcoming years. Now I'll turn it over to Laura Zhang.
So accounting for a third of our English learner students, we have over 275 students with refugee backgrounds at our school district, with a little over 200 of those students been resettled in the U.S. for less than five years. So since the beginning of this school year, we have already received over 60 new students with refugee background, already surpassing the total numbers of SRBs that we've received from the previous school year. And as you can tell, they come mostly from the regions of Africa, Middle East, a family that we received this past, this fall that came from Central America and then also from So as we take a deeper dive into our SRB population, the larger class, the largest class sizes of our SRBs are currently enrolled in our high schools and elementary school, and from the total population, with 75% of those having been in the U.S. for less than five years. Additionally, the majority of our students are from the regions of Africa and Middle East, which reflects the top five languages that are spoken by our SRB families. As you can tell from this slide here, from the past 10 years, we've seen an increase from our students with refugee backgrounds, and that's a drastic jump from 33 all the way to 276. And looking to this school year, that number is going to continue to rise, and we expect that number to rise again for the next following year. So as a part of my role, I get the opportunity to introduce new refugee arrivals to the schools that they will be attending. This involves receiving confidential documents about the family from World Relief, Wisconsin, when the family arrives in Oshkosh, and determining the child's grade placement, school readiness, transportation needs, and communicating that information to the schools. This allows a school to prepare for the student's first day and create a welcoming environment for them, as many of the students have been in refugee camps for several years, recently fleeing from war, violence, persecution, and they are now calling Oshkosh their home. In providing the services to our students with refugee backgrounds, these services are funded by three major grants, and they come from the Oshkosh Area United Way, the Department of Children and Families, and North Communities. And these grants allows us to provide services like mentoring, transportation, and activities within our multicultural outreach support services. And I also get the privilege to manage these grants by providing reports and also sharing impact stories to our funders. Additionally, I get the privilege to oversee our grant-funded refugee youth mentor program, and the youth refugee mentor program is about integrating students into the community through academic, social, and post-secondary proprietary support while maintaining and celebrating their own culture. And we do this by focusing on the following nine activities and services. And so what is the impact of a student participating in the mentor program, and why do we focus on these nine services? I could go through each one and tell you the importance, but I'd rather share a story. Last year, we had a family arrive from South Sudan, and this family had two sons that were enrolled at Oshkosh West. So within the first month, we paired the two brothers with a mentor through our refugee youth mentor program, and the mentor walked alongside both brothers and helped them set various goals to help them achieve not only academic success, but also their career, social and life skills, cultural exploration, and social engagement goals. So through their first year in the U.S., they arrived last year in late September 2022. This has been a little over a year for them, so through their first year in the U.S., both brothers have made it an effort to stay after school, to work with their mentor to accomplish academic goals. During the summer, they were to secure their first job and participated in the soccer and basketball program this school year at Oshkosh West. One of the mentors actually told me that they had to be pulled out because they were scoring too many goals in soccer, so.
No such thing.
Yeah. And as a part of our program, too, we were able to purchase soccer cleats for these students. They actually came into practice with baseball cleats, and the coach told them if they don't have soccer cleats, they can't play in their first game. So we quickly got them together, went to Rogan Shoes, and got them soccer cleats so they could play at the first soccer game. And I told them that in order for me to, well, they have to promise me that they have to score a goal, and which they made, they fulfill that promise. So when they see their remarkable growth and newfound confidence, these two brothers in the past year had, this past year has been an extraordinary privilege just to see their growth and their confidence. And so while their journey away from their home back in South Sudan was through trauma and tragedy, standing by them through this mentoring program has been quite an honor. So as they continue to reach and surpass pivotal milestones as they work with their mentor, they're beginning to carve a new narrative in their lives here in Oshkosh, and with each chapter that they continue to write, it's a testament to their resilience and their determination. Ayak, who is not able to be here, she is the boots on the ground. And so when a family arrives, she meets with the family, so they're essentially, Ayak is essentially the representative of the school district for them. And as they see her, she provides orientation for the family, making sure that they complete the necessary documents that they need, helps provide them with school supplies, clothing essentials, especially during the winter months. A lot of these families come from warmer climates, to be able to have coats, gloves, hats, boots, socks, underwear, and then also providing them with transportation, whether that is city bus training, teaching them how to provide a safe walk from home to school, and then even providing transportation for their first week or two here. She also promotes mental and social well-being. She does home visits by creating rapport, relationships with the families. A lot of the families and students love Ayak, just because of her intentionality of developing relationships with them. She also, through our grants, she's able to do social events for the kids, and then also provide education and resource events for families as well. Some of the events that we've done in the past is providing hygiene products and giving orientation on how to keep up with their health and hygiene. In addition to that, she also connects with our community, specifically the ones that she's highlighted here, Sherith International, which helps provide clothing for our families. NAMI Oshkosh, which, they help with our Spark program that we launched this past summer, and then also the Salvation Army, which we were able to partner with them this school year to provide coats for a lot of our families. And so the Spark program we just launched, first time this past summer, the Spark, it stands for...
Supporting Positive Attitudes and Resilience for Kids.
And it's a unique summer program developed to support refugee youth and enhancing their mental health and building connections within their community, especially for cultures that are not known to the U.S. Mental health is a big taboo, or it's not even talked about, so we're creating a place, safe space for them to engage in mental health. And these are pictures from this past summer. The Spark program was from mid-June till mid-August.
And planning is underway for Spark 2024.
Any questions? Dr. Hursad?
Thank you. I have a couple. There used to be federal funding that, I don't, it had various names over a period of years. Anyway, they were known as title funds, like Title I, Title II, Title III, and so on. And Title III funds, I think, at least for a time, were intended for multicultural education and resettlement of refugees. Do those still exist?
Yes.
Okay. And then I had two other questions for Dawn. You had a slide at the beginning that showed four ESL proficiency levels, and then later you talked about a fifth one.
Sure.
But there weren't any Level 5s in that slide that you showed.
That's because they're exited at that point.
Okay.
So they're technically not ELs anymore.
Okay. Do you track them somehow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
So for two years after they've been reclassified, is what they call it now, then we monitor
them for two years.
So they're still on our caseload.
Sure.
So the numbers that you see here are all active ELs. They do not include the ones that we are still monitoring, and we report back twice a year to check in on them for two years.
Okay.
They're brave, making sure that they're, they're not falling, falling through the cracks on us.
Okay, then my last question is on slide number, I think it's eight. It's the slide where you noted that in 2122, the 1.0 ESL coordinator was excluded from the total teacher FTE, and my question was, was that only for that year, or did that continue then in the following years?
It's not, it's not just, it's not included in the count, the total count. So when I, so I started in this role as ESL program coordinator in 2015.
Okay.
And it was a new position at that time, so it was still considered, I started part-time, so I still teacher and also coordinator, and I'm still on a teacher's contract. So all that time, I'm still considered a teacher, it's just not in the count. So at one point, so I was always in the count as being a teacher.
Sure.
And that, in those numbers, my role was in that count, but at some point, and I don't recall the exact year, but you can see it as an asterisk in that, on the program plan, that's when it's not counted anymore. I just don't have me in those total numbers.
Okay.
So if you want to look at apples to apples, you'd have to include me in those numbers.
Okay, so if I read that graph correctly, then, starting in 2122, the 1.0 ESL coordinator was not included, and that's true for 2223 then as well? Or was it only that one?
Do I not, I don't remember having that. Was it underneath the...
Um, yeah.
That one?
No.
No.
That's not it. And we can talk about it at another time. I don't want to take up everybody's time here.
I don't even remember having that one in this one.
Maybe it was in the handbook.
It's probably, I think it's in that, because it is in the, it is in the handbook data.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm done.
In regards to state testing, how does this all fit in? I'm looking at, they're making tremendous growth, but these are students that aren't quite at the Level 5, where they're out of the program, but they're included in the state testing. They take the state tests.
Everyone that is receiving EL services is required to take the Access for ELs state test.
So that would, that's, that would be separate from the full.
Until they reach proficiency.
Okay.
Once they reach proficiency, they no longer take the access test.
Okay. I was confused. I thought that all students, regardless of proficiency, took the forward exam.
Now, the iReady data that I showed you before, take the forward, forward exam?
Yeah.
Yeah, the forward exam.
They take the forward exam?
Okay, so they do. Okay.
So the access test is intended only for ELs. So the access test is intended only for ELs. And it is specifically measuring English language development.
Do they provide, like, any support when they take that forward exam? Because, I mean.
No.
I mean, they haven't even learned the English language yet, they're taking a forward.
It's, and it's a challenge, and we don't like to put our kids through that. But we have to, it's required, first of all. And second of all, if you think about it, it does provide us with a baseline. And the next year, the growth that you're going to see is going to be amazing, and you want to be able to document that. So if we don't set that baseline, you don't have a way to document that growth. And, and we want to see that, and then we can celebrate that. So we explain that to the students and to the parents and say, yes, this doesn't look great this year, but you're learning English, it's going to be better next year. You'll get there.
Mr. Carrance?
The presentation that, was that earlier this year or late last year? I remember last one, but when we first heard about the sixty languages that were spoken within our district, and now we're over sixty. It was kind of one of the presentations that I remember more than, more than others. It was kind of eye-opening to hear that number. I'm really proud of our community, and I'm really proud of our school district for the work that you all do, but the community as well. It means a lot to take care of these kids and these families who need us the most. And so kudos to all of you, I think you do amazing, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Selagi?
Yeah, so earlier this evening, we had the report about the students involved in extracurricular activities, and it was with our ELD students that there was the biggest gap. I loved the story that you shared about the brothers that jumped right in, even in their first year, joined some sports teams, other things. I just wonder what we can do to close that gap with other students and encourage them to find a club or, or an activity that they might enjoy outside of school.
Yeah, a lot of that has to do with transportation. So even though they have access to it, they're unable to make it back home after practice. They're unable to make the practice if there's morning practices. A lot of it stems from transportation, that I believe that prohibits them from joining sports.
Okay. That's, and, and as I watched that, I thought, okay, so we have this Spark program. And I remember when you came back in June, there was pictures of students going on a ski trip and things like that. So I certainly know that we're making sure that these students feel involved and connected and belonging. So I know it's there, it's just not represented well in the data we had earlier today. But that's interesting to hear, that part of it is transportation. I can think that there would probably be a lot of barriers to jump right into everything that a high school has to offer.
And they would love to. I think the city bus stops at 6:30, and a lot of times the practice is at seven. And no one wants to walk home during the wintertime for basketball practice.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Carolyn and Mr. Wright?
So I was wondering if you could speak to the benefits of having refugees in our schools? Because we talk a lot about, you know, how we're helping them get settled, but actually having refugees in our schools benefits our students because it promotes more learning, and you know better than I do what the benefits are.
Yeah, I believe the benefits have stemmed all the way from when I was in school. As my family came as refugees as well, we see the impact. Just looking at the Mung population back, looking at the larger populations in Minnesota and California where there's now a Mung congressman in Senate, active in the community. Within our school specifically, there's just more perspectives. It allows our students to engage with people that are part of the world that they haven't been to, opens their worldview. I think that's things that refugees could come in and bring to our student body and also to our community that we have experience.
That's exactly what I was hoping you would say, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Tremendous job, really, really tremendous job. Long-term thinking though, you guys talked, you talked briefly about space, and the growth of this program is, we're kind of, you know, reaching a capacity limit. And then you said it's expected, the program's expected to go next year again too. Like, I'm asking this as a board member, right? Like, what, what type of planning is realistic? You know, if this growth trajectory keeps occurring, like, before? We have to look at maybe different facility-type things or whatnot? I'm just curious if you guys have a handle on if those numbers are going to continue to, continue to grow or where we're at with that? So that we can support this program properly?
They are expected to grow. And we've talked about, we've reached a ceiling and that we need to start thinking about the way we are doing our programming and rethinking. So we're at that point now that we need to talk about it.
Okay.
And I can jump in. One of the things that Dawn and the team have done is they've created a document that indicates where we're projected to see our growth and then the staffing that we need to be able to support the needs. So one of the things that we'll be working through is being able to allocate the resources needed to provide staff to support the needs and the increased population. So as we continue to project, in slide six, I mean, it's very clear that we have growing numbers of students in our ESOL programming, and that also comes with implications for staffing needs, which I think currently our program is limited based on, first of all, the resources that we can allocate for the FTE, those positions for staff, and then being able to, once we allocate resources for those positions, being able to recruit staff here in the Oshkosh area to fill those positions.
Okay.
So maybe there are opportunities for partnerships within organizations to support with recruiting and just, so I think it's a larger conversation to, and as we expect continued growth, just thinking creatively with leveraging our resources and our partnerships to bring the human resources we need to continue the great programming that we've learned about tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Herzog? Over the years, UW Oshkosh has been a good partner with the school district because they've offered the certification and the licensing for the ESOL teachers. I don't know where we are with that today. I know that there have been retirements within that leadership program, but that's been a big asset to the district, taking people who have a teaching license but not necessarily one for ESOL and getting them that license to be successful in the program. And looking at the names of some of your teachers, they've been in the program a long time and have chosen to stay there. They're very committed, very dedicated, and really want to make a difference in the lives of these, these students, which is commendable. So thank you for the leadership you provide.
I have one question. I was under the assumption that back when the diversity, equity, and inclusion position was created, that this English as a second language was something that was going to be worked through within that position. So I'm just wondering how we are able to utilize that diversity, equity, and inclusion position and Mr. Miller into helping this role substantially?
So I can start with that, and then Dr. Davis, you have some insight too. So one of the reasons, so we, as a part of designing our staffing structure and looking at who on our executive leadership team makes the most sense at this time to provide program support, based on some of my experiences and licensure under student services and leading ESL multilingual ESOL programming and previous experiences, I was able to come in and hit the ground, running with programmatic support. And so that will evolve over time as that is redistributed, that responsibility may be redistributed. I'll certainly continue to be involved and supportive in that work. But we certainly see our ESOL programming as an aspect of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so as we continue to build our structure, that we'll see the responsibility for support transition over time. And Dr. Davis, I know you have some.
Yeah, I would just add to that, as you saw tonight with our growing, growing numbers, community outreach, like, is a major part of that. And that's, that's something that, that does trend in our structure, trend more towards the diversity, equity, and inclusion position. So that's something I would expect us to just continue to pick up on those responsibilities and be able to just evolve, as Dr. Coleman had said. So I just, I also just, just want to thank Dawn and Laura. So I know this, this presentation was done about six months ago, so usually we do it on an annual basis. It's a heavy lift to put this together, so I just want to say thank you for doing that. The importance, I think, of, of being able to come tonight and present it now is that, as, as we have said, the program's growing and needs some restructuring. For us to, to add this into our current, or our staffing model for next school year, we really needed this report to come out now to be able to be out in front of the board and understand that as we make some moves as part of our staffing pattern in the spring, that this, this program would be included as part of that process. So just to give some context, and again, just thank you guys for the extra lift for this year and getting on that cadence, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Can you call the roll, please? Dewitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carrance?
Aye.
Selagi?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Motion carried. Great. Request for future agenda items, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Well done.
Future agenda items, okay. Any announcements? Dr. Herzog?
There's the holiday parade tomorrow night in downtown Oshkosh. Great opportunity to support our school bands, high school and middle school. So if you get a chance to get down there, I think it starts about 6:30?
Six, yeah, 6:30.
Yes.
Right. Brewery Futures will also be there. And so I'll be driving very carefully through the holiday parade, so listen for the horn.
This is a great man, perfect. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, okay. Carlin is second?
Aye.
Carrance?
Aye.
Selagi?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman? Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Dewitt?
Aye.
Thank you all. See you in two weeks. No?
Yes, it is two weeks.